Okay, do we have everybody? Do we have Pierre and Harold?
Pierre is still jumping on. I can hear her on the phone with him. And I do not see Councilmember Anderson.
Okay, we'll give it another minute or two, see if one or both of them pop up.
Pierre is connecting.
Okay.
Let me reach out to Harold Pierre. Harold, his link says lost his way. Let me re-forward to Harold.
That's what mine did.
Okay, yeah, my account got locked up last night as part of the NRC meeting when I turned my hosting duties over to somebody else. We needed four hours of Zoom assistance today to unlock.
Best laid plans of mice and men often go astray.
Murphy's very busy.
Steinbeck also. I hear Pierre.
Hi there. Can you see me, huh? No, I'm here.
Not yet. There you are.
See, it was just one of my magical acts.
Uh, I don't see Harold. I just reset the link. Let me try calling him. He has notifications off.
Okay, we'll give you a minute.
Hello, Bill. Good evening.
He's not responding, and I don't have an email, and I've resent the link. So I'll keep, I'll keep trying him.
I could go over to his house if you want.
Does anybody have Galen's phone number?
Uh, let me check.
I don't seem to have it.
I don't know if I do. No, I don't.
I like that we're small enough of a town that Pierre could run over there and knock on his door.
I resent, I resent the invite, and I've texted him.
Okay, well, we're gonna go ahead and get started, and hopefully he'll join us by the time we get done with all the preliminary, whatever you wanna call it. We'll go ahead and call to order this regular meeting of the Winter City Council on Tuesday, March 1st, 2022, at 6:33. Sorry for the delay, everybody. Having some technical difficulties tonight with Zoom, which brings us to our next fun item, the COVID disclaimer. We're conducting this meeting pursuant to AB 361. So it's being held via teleconference. You can speak if you press the raise your hand button, or by phone, by pressing star nine, and we will call on you for appropriate item. And if you'd like to, we have public comment as well. And you can also submit written comments via email by 5:00 PM on the Monday prior to the meeting, and they'll be read into the record. And that's about it. That pretty much covers it. We're gonna move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. And let's see, maybe Tina Loudon, can you lead us in the pledge?
Okay, I'm waiting for the flag.
Here it comes.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God.
Under God, indivisible, visible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. Since I skipped it, we'll do roll call. Elena, hopefully Harold's joined us.
Looks like he has. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lauren.
Here.
Councilmember New.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Biazzi.
Here.
And Mayor Cowan.
Here. That's why we waited to make sure Harold got on. Okay, moving on. Approval of the agenda. City manager, do we have any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes. Thank you.
Both to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Lauren, a second by Councilmember New, and Elena. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Absolutely. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lauren.
Hi.
Councilmember New.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Biazzi.
Hi.
And Mayor Cowan.
Hi. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next is council comments, and we will start with Councilmember Lawrence.
Okay. On Friday, February 18th, Mayor Pro Tem Biazzi and I attended the Zoom YED Winter 2022 Leaders Summit on Yolo Broadband 2.0 sponsored by Laughco. It was a lot. On February 23rd, Councilmember New attended the Winners' Joint Unified School District 2x2 on my behalf, as I had a prior commitment, and I wanted to thank him publicly. I met with, awesome job. I met with City Manager Chappa earlier via Zoom to review tonight's agenda, but I wanted to have some additional words tonight. It's Women's History Month. There have been many scores of years in US history where women were forbidden by laws to have equal access to jobs, voting rights, holding patents, and even higher education. Women have had to overcome many obstacles put in front of them by law and society. We celebrate their overcoming, and we recognize their struggle. With that, I wanted to mention that oftentimes, an unjust system that denies opportunity can seem fair to others. With that, I wanted to call attention to the process of appointing the highest vote getter in an election to a two-year term in office, as we do in winners. When a rotating system by year would develop more leadership opportunities for more council members. Women's History Month reminds us that opportunities shared often bring the best of all of us and give us reasons to celebrate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember New.
That would mean me, yes. On Thursday, the 17th of February, I attended the SACOG Board Meeting, and we spent most of our time working on racial equity statement, and we worked on that for about an hour and a half, and came out with a statement that we could all agree with. On Wednesday, the 23rd of February, as Councilmember Lauren said, I was, I sat in at the 2x2 with the school district. On the 25th of February, I turned, attended the FFNE, the fundraising committee for the senior senator. On the 28th, I went to an Elder Day meeting. And also on the 28th, I met with a citizen who was concerned about the park between Newton's Express Expressway and Main Street. And this morning, I met with our city manager to discuss the agenda and a couple other items of city business. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. On February 10th, I attended a Zoom meeting for the Putea Creek Committee. It's very 14th. Meeting with manager, traveled to go over tonight's agenda. And that's
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Biazzi.
Thank you, Mayor. On February 17th, I attended the city staff management meeting. On the 18th, as Councilmember Lauren indicated, I attended the YED workshop, which talked a lot about broadband. We had our own local assembly member speaking. It was very informative. On the 22nd, I attended the Planning Commission meeting. On the 23rd, I sat in on the Yolo Fire Safe Council meeting. Also, on the 23rd, the city and school 2x2 meeting. On the 28th, I had the agenda review with the city manager, and later, in the evening of the 28th, was the Natural Resources Committee meeting. And that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. On the 23rd, I was on a Zoom for the Fire Safe Council. And then yesterday, I had a call with the city manager to review tonight's agenda. And earlier today, I got a call from Sabina with the Yoshi Dehe. I'm not even gonna attempt her last name. We all know I'm not very good at oddly spelled names, but it was regarding the Sports Wagering Act that's gonna be on the, coming to voters in November. And she just wanted to fill me in on the tribe's position. And I think it's something that's worth our attention, and we should all look at, and we may wanna consider proclamation down the road in, in favor of this, but I don't know if everybody else got that call or that information emailed to them, but I think it's worth, worth a review. Anyway, that's all I have. And with that, we'll move on to public comment. This is
Mayor Cowan, before we, before we move on, if, if it's up to maybe having three people, I totally support bringing that back. Maybe you could forward what you received to City Manager Chappa, and she could share it with the rest of council, but it seems like supporting our neighbors is really, you know, something that we generally do.
Yeah, I agree. I will do that. I'll send it to City Manager so she can send it out, and everybody can get a look. Look, see. All right. Public comment. This is time for anybody that'd like to address the city council on items which are not listed on tonight's agenda. Do we have anybody that wishes to address the council?
I did not receive any written comment, Mayor, and I do not see any hands raising. Oh, there's one. Dylan.
Okay, Dylan, welcome. You're, there you go.
Just unmuted, my bad. Um, I just wanted to touch basis on what's going on with the street closures. I'm not sure if that was on today's agenda.
Um, yes, it is.
Okay. So, um.
So would you like to save your comments for when we talk about it, or?
Yeah, when would that roughly be? When is on the agenda? I unfortunately couldn't see that part.
Um, it's, it won't be too far away, because we just have the consent calendar, and then it's the first discussion item we'll have. So if you wanna hang out, we'll be on that shortly.
Sounds good. I'll hang tight.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Elena, do we have anybody else for public comment for non-agendized items?
I do not see any other hands at this time, Mayor.
Okay, then we'll move on to consent calendar. City Manager Chappa?
Yes, thank you very much. We have four items on the consent calendar. The first item is a proclamation recognizing women in construction week for the week of March 6. And I believe we do have somebody here who is attending Maria Patchen. I see the logo in the background. And this was a request that went forward to the mayor and to city staff. The second item are the minutes from the regular meeting of February 15th, 2022. Third item is Resolution Number 2022-17, which is renewing the authorization and making findings for remote meetings. And our final item on the consent calendar is a recommendation to appoint Patrick Wall to the Natural Resources Commission and adjusting the terms for three of the commissioners from August 2022 to December 22, 22, to coincide with those council member terms, because those are the, those commissioners follow the appointing council, the council members who have appointed them to the commission, and those are the four items on the consent calendar.
Hey, thank you. Is there any council comments on the consent calendar? Okay. Is there any public comments on the consent calendar? Maria, would you like to comment on the women in construction?
I would. Thank you, Mayor, for addressing this this evening and taking the time to recognize the contributions of many women, both in winters and the community abroad here in the Sacramento region. So I was very moved by Jesse Lawrence's statement earlier, and I want to point out that there were, for many years, difficulty with not only just getting women in construction, but retaining them. And I have some good news today. Our numbers have actually went up according to the Labor, the Bureau of Labor and Statistics. And I am proud to say that we are now officially at 11% of the total number of individuals in the building and construction trades. So thank you. We have been slowly moving the needle, but we wanna talk about a lot of the contributions. And recently, the US Mint has taken on a recommendation that I had forwarded to them. And that is the recognition of women in various industries, not just the construction industry, for their contributions to the US. Okay, and so I want you to know that this is a high honor that you guys are giving us. And we recognize it, but the philanthropy events that we do and the work is all gonna be highlighted during this week. And I invite all of the members here to come to one event at least. I'm facilitating a lunch and learn. In fact, you can sit at home and watch it with about three others, and it's about the gateways into construction trades. So what is being offered here in the region? For those in high, at the high school level, those who have a brush with the justice system, and with those who just have a passion for maybe driving heavy equipment, or moving into another aspect of the construction industry. So thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Elena, do we have any other public comment on the consent calendar?
Uh, yes, it looks like Tina Loudon has her hand raised, and then Kate Lattish.
Okay.
Tina. Tina Loudon, 320 Neiman Street. A lot of people know that my husband and I, we have an export business, and it's all construction supplies. So I want to let you add it. Wow, woman-owned, just to let you know, Maria. But I am proud to say that our granddaughter Jasmine Ammudi is becoming a welder at the Solano Community College. They have wonderful, wonderful programs. That's all I wanna say.
All right. Thank you, Tina. Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. Kate Lattish, 400 Morgan Street, number 21. And I'm, I'm a member of the National Resources Commission, but I'm speaking, speaking entirely for myself this evening. And so, so I'm just, I'm speaking to that item on the consent calendar. I'd like to start by thanking Eric Larson for his long service on the Winners' Putea Creek Committee, involvement in forming the Natural Resources Commission, and then service on the Natural Resources Commission. It's, the city has really benefited from his expertise and insight, so I wanna thank him as he concludes his service. And then I want to thank Patrick Wall for, for jumping into things and, and applying to join the Natural Resources Commission and joining us at yesterday's meeting. So I, I look forward to, I hope the council moving forward with that item this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. All right. If there's no other comment, we'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
I'll move this.
Okay.
I'll second the item.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember New, and a second by Councilmember Lauren for approval of consent calendar. Elena, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Absolutely. Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Councilmember Lauren.
Hi.
Councilmember New.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Biazzi.
Hi.
And Mayor Cowan.
Hi. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Okay, next, we're gonna move on to discussion items. We have no presentations tonight. And the first thing up is the Main Street, Street Closure Program Schedule and Special Events Update. I believe City Manager is gonna start us off with this one.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This item has a twofold purpose. The first is to consider a request by the Downtown Business Association to reinstate the weekend closure of Main Street from Railroad to the Mid Block Crossing seasonally. And so they have submitted a letter that is attached to the, to the staff report, and they are recommending that the city council real, well, re-initiate or reinstate the weekend closure schedule for Main Street from Friday, March 25th, beginning at 3:30, and then extending, and then that weekend closure would be lifted on a Monday morning, and they would recommend that this be implemented through the season, which would end October, Monday, October 31st. And so as council and the community is aware, Main Street was initially closed at the start of the pandemic to be able to support outdoor dining, when all the restaurants were closed for indoor dining. And then in November 16th of 20 2021, we actually lifted the, well, it was December of 2020, when the council authorized two-way traffic on Main Street. And then it became just a weekend closure from Friday evening to Monday morning. And then in November of 2021, Main Street remained open seven days a week through the winter months. And so at the time of that lifting of the weekend closure, the Downtown Business Association indicated that they would like to come back with a closure schedule and some programming for the downtown area. And part of that request is before you this evening. So the first item for the council to discuss is whether it would like to reinstate the weekend closure of Main Street for just the half-block area, Friday evenings, 3:30, to Monday morning at about 7:30, when public works can lift the barricades. And if they, the request is to begin that for the last Friday of the month, which would be March 25th, and it would run through the duration. The DBA is asking for this to be a recurring seasonal closure, so that every year would automatically begin on the last weekend of March, and it would automatically end on the, at the last weekend in October. So there are a couple items as part of that request for council to consider. Initially, when I had the conversation with the Downtown Business Association, my recommendation was to wait until April, because the weather typically is warmer, and we don't know what the weather is gonna be like in March. However, as we have seen, the weather has been glorious, and there's not much rain on the horizon. So the request is that they, they reinstate this closure beginning March 25th. The request is also to make it a recurring closure that could be lifted at any point by any city council in the future, which means that if there's a fixed schedule that the council supports, March to October, it would be automatic unless otherwise amended by the city council or lifted or changed by the city council. The council can do that, or it can also decide that it would like to have this to be authorized every year. So for example, they authorize it for this six-month period, and in the fall, when we've had an opportunity to assess how actively utilized the right-of-way has been on, on Main Street, the council can decide at that point that it would like to re-implement this again, beginning in either March or April, whatever, you know, month seems to be most appropriate. We could also fold in any of the information that we obtained as part of the downtown visioning project. And so there's sort of two points here for the council to decide, do they wanna lift, do they wanna implement the downtown closure, the Main Street closure, beginning March 25th, and run it for the six-month period until October 31st? And would they like that to make that an annual authorization, or would they would like, would you like to make that a recurring authorization? So there's a resolution that's been prepared and attached to the staff report that has some spaces filled in, depending on what council would prefer to do, but Resolution Number 2022-18 reestablishes the seasonal Main Street closure schedule. And you would just decide if it's March or April, and if it would close in October, and is it recurring, or is it the one time? So that's the first part of the staff report. The reason the Downtown, the Downtown Business Association is also, secondarily, they are now asking for authorization to promote a spring festival that would kick off their season, which begins March 25th. In, which has also been included in the staff report. So again, in conversations with the Downtown Business Association, the recommendation has always been that they need more time to plan an event for the downtown community. So I have included in the staff report, and this event has not been approved despite postings on social media and in the community. So I've include, for feedback purposes, the tentative schedule that might be for 2022, and information about historically some of the major events that have been planned in the community. And I've shared this same chart, for the most part, it's pretty similar in the past, last fall, when some of these issues popped up. And so as council and the community, this is an opportunity to provide a little bit of feedback about the proposed spring festival, which staff has only had an opportunity to discuss today as a staff this morning. And so in the staff report, what the DBA is recommending is a closure on Friday, March 25th, which would be from Railroad to First Street, so an extra half-block. They would like to create a food and music event. And then on Saturday, they would like to have a downtown street fair that would run from Elliott Street all the way to Second Street. Again, staff has indicated in the past that there are some safety concerns associated with vehicles and pedestrians, depending on volumes at Railroad and Main. And the feedback that we will provide the DBA for this particular event is that any significant event that includes Railroad and Main either needs to be A, closed with a detour to Russell Street, or it needs to be shortened, so it's from Main to Second. Crossing guards with thousands of people is, is not a real, a really good environment from a pedestrian and vehicle safety perspective. And then Sunday, there would be no added impacts. They're proposing a chalk art activities that would be just for that half-block area. So typically, the way the special event applications work is that those applications are submitted to staff. Staff has a internal special event committee that meets to be able to review these special events. We provide feedback to the applicants. Anything that requires a street closure, for example, also includes a requirement that all of the impacted businesses and residences within the closure area, there must be outreach to those folks, and then there's a list where they sign off saying they support the closure, or they're, they weren't able to make contact with the person, or the person doesn't support the closure. So that when we consider that information, we can take the people who are most impacted by the event, we could take their input into consideration. And that's what helps us form our recommendation to the city council when we bring street closures to the city council. We have not yet seen that list. So we have an event application. We have a little bit of detail about what they're trying to accomplish, but we have, we don't have the street closure affected property owner list or business owner list. And so we will work with the applicants about this event, provide them with feedback, and then we will bring a recommendation for what this event might look like back to the city council on March 15th. Given the short amount of time that is available to plan this event and implement it. Given the short amount of time that is available to plan this event and implement it, I offer to include this information in the staff report tonight to get some feedback. I also think it's important that when we talk about significant events and the estimate, I think, for the downtown street fairs upwards of 5,000 people, that it's done in the context of all the other events that potentially might be hosted and coordinated within the downtown area, so that the neighbors, the businesses, and the general public have that information available as part of considering whether or not we want to add additional major community events into the area. And so the second part of the staff report is really to obtain a little bit of feedback from the community and from the City Council regarding the concept of bookending the Main Street closure, weekend closure program with significant community events on either side. And I think that's it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, first, before we get into this, since this is kind of sounding more and more like two items here. The first is just the reoccurring street closure. Are we going to do, do we need to do two separate votes on this, and or is the first part a vote and the second part a?
The second part is feedback, yes. And so the action before council is just to consider reinstating the weekend closures on Main Street. And then the second part is feedback on the the special events that are being proposed by the Downtown Business Association spring. And then there will be something that will be similar that will come related to the fall.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, council, comments, concerns, questions? Anybody? Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I like that the Downtown Business Association is proposing to have a regular scheduled closures. So people do know what to plan for, what's going on in winters. That's the whole point of having these street closures, is to try to get more people to come and feel comfortable visiting our businesses. One question that I have, and this may be more for the city manager, I think, is during the downtown visioning process, my understanding is we're going to have them look at the consultants that we hire to look at some of the traffic circulation through there, because my main concern is that people that get halfway down the block and realize that we have a street closure, and they have a really hard time turning around. Some people, no problem, other people, it's really hard for them to turn around in mid-block, because we don't have an area for that. So if we're going to do this, I'm hoping that we can come up with some type of a solution for traffic circulation when we have these street closures. So I don't know if the city manager has a.
Sure. So as part of that, one of the things that we're looking at is use of the public right-of-way, which includes the outdoor gathering space on Main Street. And we have asked the consultants to take a look at some of the circulation in the downtown area as part of the placement of the outdoor dining area, if those are to stay, and also the alleys and how things circulate through Main Street and the alleys in the downtown area. We are meeting with the recommended consultant this week to be able to fine-tune the scope of work and the budget, so we can bring that back to the City Council in the next couple meetings.
Thank you.
Hey, Councilmember Lauren.
Thank you for recognizing me. First, I'm I'm not adverse to the idea of having an idea that we're going to have a closure for six months. I mean, I think that does allow the downtown businesses to plan. But I would also want to consider the community impacts and residential impacts, especially to the people that are that are, you know, on the streets that surround our downtown, that are like Russell, that are mainly impacted. I believe that those tributary streets aren't meant for all the weekend traffic and and event traffic. So I'm concerned with that. I'm concerned with any closures of of Main and Railroad. I noticed on the the grid of events that Festival de la Comunidad, Carnitas Festival, is marked that that has a closure there, and it it does not. And we we don't have a closure there, because we think that 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 needs to be open for safety reasons. So I would want to hear from the chief on 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 that closure, and maybe from the fire department to, you know, find out what what the best way of handling pedestrian traffic it would be if that's going to be something that we close with any frequency. And I I do want to talk about item four, but I I do really support your idea talking about item, the items one through three in their entirety first, and maybe having a vote before discussing the event planning.
Okay, any other council comments? I'll I'll make a couple. I'm I'm definitely in favor of the half-block closure from Friday to Sunday. I do feel that at this point, because there's a lot of things kind of up in the air with the consultant and and the downtown visioning process. I think it's something that it doesn't hurt one bit to have the council review it each each spring like we're doing now. I think it should be up for an annual review, just to get everybody's input on the pros and cons. So and I would be in favor of approving that part of this tonight for the for the half-block. I do share concerns of others with, you know, when we start crossing Railroad and Main, because as we know from other events, that can get pretty pretty hairy, and I know that's part of the process with the larger events, with the meetings leading up to the recommendation to the council is is being somebody that's sat on a couple of committees that have been involved with that. There typically is meetings that involve police chief, fire chief, and everybody else about how we're going to handle the street closures and 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 the pedestrian traffic and all that. So I think that's something that definitely needs to be looked at by those by those parties and recommendations made for that part of it. But I think the first part, I'm I'm good with that. I'm good with having a annual review. If there isn't any other council comments, we'll open it up for some public comment and maybe some comments from either or both of the chiefs, if maybe. Yep, go ahead.
Councilmember New. I do this too often, but I agree with you. And I and yeah, I everything that I definitely wanted to have an annual review of it in the looking into the Main Railroad, Main Street Railroad crossing, I think, is something that we need to do also. So I am in agreement, and just wanted that to be on the record. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Elena, do we have some hands up for public comment?
Yes, Mayor Tina Loudon.
Go ahead, Tina.
Oh, thank, thank you very much. I agree with the annual review. My concern is that I believe when you close it between at Main and Railroad, I think you eliminate two, maybe three or four disabled parking spots. And, you know, we are more of a grayer, yes, grayer community. And I think that should be considered when we look at everything. I I do see us, thank goodness Jerry and I are able to cross the street, but I do see more people with walkers and wheelchairs, et cetera. So please take that into account. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you. I do see a hand up from Dylan. Can we bring him in?
Yes. Welcome back. Thank you. So I do kind of see the same concern I have as with Tina, is that I do see that there is quite a bit of customers that do come in through town. I mean, that I am a customer in that immediate area that would be impacted by these closures that happen weekly for a six-month process, that it's hard for them to walk, and especially it doesn't just affect me, it affects the pharmacy that has elderly customers that can't walk, not just because they don't want to, it's because they physically can't. So when you take away something that's so close like that for them, where are they left to park at that point? And I see people that struggle that are stroke victims, people that are elderly, that are trying to struggle, just make it that half-block. Um, and that also, and a few other things would be just the impact of traffic going through there, as someone else already mentioned. It's really hard to navigate that, even if you're if you're an avid driver, and you know what you're doing, it might be easier for some of the people that are elderly that may not be able to navigate so well, or even people just, I mean, we know there's not great drivers on the road, are backing into cars, hitting cars and stuff like that. So I mean, you wouldn't want people to come to town, too, and also to be sitting, oh, well, this is what's happening here. And also, too, just the overall traffic that's now being diverted, as Jesse Lauren mentioned, that all the other side streets that aren't exactly meant to have that amount of traffic. Because I know on the corner of, what is it, Railroad and Abbey, extremely blind corner, there I've seen accidents happen there all the time. Same thing with Russell and First Street. That's not really, because it's not a four-way, both of those aren't four-way, so when you divert traffic to those areas, it might cause an issue. And the other thing that kind of concerns me, too, is when we have something like the special events and stuff like that, there's a sign-off for the, you know, as you guys mentioned, to get community intake and businesses that are in that area to get their opinion of what they think about it, and whether they want to approve it or not. But when it's something that's a six-month closure for three days out of the week, why are we being addressed about this? And I know I'm not the only business that feels this way. And that's immediately impacting someone in front of their business where we are located. And I see the street closure being something that was inaccessible when we had tables out in the middle of the street, but we haven't had that in a long time. That was something that was in the beginning, when we didn't have the pergolas, we didn't have any of the stuff, you know? And it was, there was the wine barrels there initially, and then it became more of like a semi-permanent thing with poles being there. And I I saw it being feasible at that time. But the amount of traffic that we see, considering I'm down there a large amount of time. And I see
I think we're losing Dylan.
Dylan, you may want to turn off your video. Dylan, Dylan, you may want to turn off your video, so your audio comes through.
Creates such a big influx of people coming to town for that so much, because everything is, it's it's open. Where downtown dining wasn't a thing, because it was it was closed.
I think I think we're losing Dylan here.
Can you guys hear me better?
Yes.
Go ahead, see if you can finish up.
Can you guys hear me better?
There you go. Yes.
Can you guys hear?
Yeah, it's it's in and out. We hear you, we hear a couple words, and then you're gone again.
Can you hear me better now? Okay, so I think it, you know, being necessary at that time. Okay, let me try. Let me try one thing really quickly here. Just one second, let me try one thing really quick.
We'll see if we can come back to Dylan later.
I'm going to try to join in on my phone to see if that changes.
Sure. Elena, who's next?
Chris Turkovich has his hand raised.
Okay, Chris, welcome.
Good. You want Dylan to keep going?
Go ahead, we'll come back to Dylan.
Okay. Thank you, Chris Turkovich, 636 Foxglove Circle, President of the Downtown Business Association. We appreciate the opportunity to discuss this. It's for the downtown, the the outdoor dining and and street closure last year was was essential for getting us through pandemic. And this year, new set of opportunities. We have all that investment on the street, and got a lot of positive feedback last year about it from both businesses and community members who enjoyed that that area. This year, we're excited to to put it to use in a in kind of a post-pandemic atmosphere. And I think the two things between being coming out of pandemic, things opening up, as well as the opportunity to go through the downtown visioning program, are two kind of nice opportunities to see how the space is going to get utilized, and whether we want to keep things the same, change things, or or remove the investment and go back to the way things were. So the the Friday through Monday closure worked out quite well during the warm season last year, which is why we thought it's appropriate to bring that back and and use it, utilize it during the the warm months. March typically, the time of the year here, where where that's accessible. I know the the farming operations in this area use March as the frost is typically ended, and so that's kind of what we use March and the Fourth Friday in March as as our date to to recommend that that system start up again, as well as October as a the the fall season to be able to wrap things up and and open up streets and and traffic. I think we're all kind of excited to see what downtown looks like this year. This will be the first year we have everybody open, hotel open, and that full or near full capacity throughout the the summer months. So I know we're going to, we're going to have a lot to discuss with the downtown visioning. And the idea of the event, so yeah, there are definitely two separate ideas here. And the this, the spring open event is really to highlight, if if we're going to do this disclosure, we want to make sure we're communicating well with the the public and the community that we are, we're making these changes and what to expect. And we, that's our idea of bookending events, not to do Fourth Fridays every month, but to do these two larger events. One to start the season, and one to to wrap it up. And so appreciate the opportunity and be happy to discuss any more questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Elena, next?
Corinne Martinez has her hand raised, and then Dylan.
Okay, Corinne, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Cowan. Corinne Martinez, 115 Baker Street, also a member of the Board of the Downtown Business Association. And with a business on Main Street, 15 Main Street, various a gap. So, you know, for, as Chris has said, I, you know, it did work out for us well last year during a pandemic year. We look at the opportunity to, you know, establish this window between the end of March and the end of October as a time when the community, as well as visitors, can enjoy our incredibly beautiful and envious downtown historic Main Street. The the improvements that the city invested in for us, that we're very grateful for with the pergolas and the barriers for during COVID, that allowed us to go out on the street, are the envy of the region. They look beautiful, and visitors from all over comment on how they enjoy coming to downtown to enjoy that. The street closure on the weekend is a big part of that, where people enjoy being able to move freely, you know, across the street. There are a couple of new businesses, the opening on the south side of the street, actually, the Art Gallery, which had its soft opening earlier already this year. And I understand the the Buck Corn Meat Market will be opening soon. So new businesses coming online, that's going to be more attractive to visitors and hopefully to the community as well, to come down there and enjoy. I think using this year, as we also intend in in the in-between to do more programming of the closed space. I know there was some feedback that it wasn't, it wasn't always used. You know, the chalk art idea that's part of the event that's been described as the second item on the agenda tonight is actually something that we anticipate being an ongoing event throughout the street closure period to bring the community, children, and visitors alike to, you know, doing chalk art in the street, not on the sidewalk, but actually in the street on that half-block. So actively programming that space with, although not a not a Fourth Friday every night, definitely with music on Friday nights, as well as some music on Saturday with the Open Mic, the Winter's Open Mic Group, which intends to come back out on the street on Saturday. So we have a significant amount of programming that we're anticipating for using that half-block. We'd like to be able to implement that and test that out this year. We'd like to be able to implement that and test that out this year and, and see how that works along with the visioning program. And so would look for your support in this initial item that is requiring a vote and we'll probably also have some comments on the, on the, on the event one as well. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Corinne. Elena, next?
We will try and bring Dylan back if you would like to unmute yourself, Dylan.
Yes. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Cool. So the, the one thing I wanted to continue expressing was the usage of that street, which is I see it right now being used more as like an event space more than it is a street. Especially with all the closures, which is original tent is to let people go through. And I do see the, the, the want for it to be used as an event space. I mean, essentially considering as Corinne mentioned, open mic night every Saturday there and then the fourth Fridays, which was a great thing. Every once in a while, but I think having it as a schedule every single weekend for that six month period. I think it might be a stretch considering that it's, it was intentionally or its original intention was because of the pandemic to, how would you say? To have somewhere for people to eat that wasn't indoor because indoor dining wasn't allowed at the time. But now I see the usage of that as dwindled down to almost nothing. There is a few times where I do see a few seldomly sold that are out there. But I do see three quarters of it sitting empty with tables that are eyesore. The areas are never clean. It to me, it, it seems like to, to close a street for that might be a bit extensive for that period of time. I could see it being closed for just like a special event and for things of like that. But to use it as a weekly event space, I mean, we have Rotary Park for that. We have other areas for use that we could definitely utilize. But I do see the, the want to centralize it in an area where all the businesses at, at the same time. Is, is people are, are people reaching out to these businesses to get their input? I haven't personally been reached out to. I've been here for 16 years and I haven't really had much of an input and what really happens in front of our business either. And I mean, I understand that it's not just me who's not being communicated with. I have five neighbors that are on the same page as me is like, we don't see being that much of a necessity to close it for that long, but a period of time. And I, I, I do see where Tina is coming into with the disabled parking. It makes it a, it makes it a burden for people and to navigate all of that.
Hey, thank you, Dylan. Elena, do we have anybody else that wishes to comment?
I see no other hands raised at this time, Mayor.
Okay. Back to council. Any further comments? Councilmember Lauren?
I had a couple of questions for the DBA and I'm hoping that Chris can answer them. It, and they aren't really germane to whether or not there's a street closure, but kind of the usage. So when I, when I think about giving the authority of having part of streets closed for three days a week or, you know, weekends, three days a week for months on end. I think about how we evaluate that usage. And I was just wondering if if there's going to be evaluation of, of its success. Or how, how are you evaluating that this is something that maybe should happen again or? And who is it benefiting and who might not be benefiting from it? And then the last part, I know you, you probably want to answer that. Go ahead. I'll wait.
No, 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 I have to go ahead and yawn.
And, and the other one is when you are planning for the events in the evening. I noticed, you know, there are many other events on the city calendar. Will you be competing with the events or complementing the events? And you know, the, the event that I am most familiar with this Carnitas Festival and that's happening in the park. Will there be a competing event inside, you know, the, the street closure and how does that work with having a whole, a bunch of parking not available? So you know, I, I, I want to work on how will we be complimenting each other in all the great events in the city and not competing. Along, along with evaluating the success.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Yeah. We, the Downtown Business Association spent a lot of time this winter kind of addressing the, some of these questions and and we felt, you know, especially during the winter months, we weren't utilizing the, the space. And that's why we made the recommendation to, to keep it open during the, the winter months. And so we, we looked a lot at programming and scheduling and that's how we felt if we're not using the space, then it absolutely should, should not be closed down. But we, we wanted to take the opportunity to really spend a season this year to program it. And as Corinne said, we've got quite a schedule of adding more programming throughout the season to, to utilize the space better throughout each week as well as not compete with other events. That's why you know, our request is starting in March because the weather is nice. We also don't want to compete with youth day. We've looked at all the big calendar events and and kind of strategize our, our calendar around those. Carnitas Festival is one of the, the best festivals we have in, in the city, not only just downtown, but in the city. And so we, we don't plan to do any events on that, you know, that month, that weekend to allow those youth day, Carnitas Festival, some of these critical events, tractor parade to, to stand on their own and to shine. And so that's, we're trying to, to meet that compromise between keeping the space to its best use. Opening it up during the, the winter months for, for traffic and parking. And then utilize it during the, the warmer months when pedestrians are out and we can, we can program things and, and do things throughout the, the summer.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
As far as evaluation, so we have, we have quite a bit into some of these programming. So we're going to be looking a lot about kind of attendance as, as well as usage to, to gauge things like the music and the chalk art things on Sundays, taking a look at how this programming is working, both for our kind of downtown usage as well as I'm, I'm sure that will, will feed back quite a bit into the downtown visioning as we, we start that process to see what is working and, and what is not working.
You would still be submitting an amplified sound permit to the city and then it would go to council when you do plan for amplified sound. Is that correct?
No.
No. So administratively, we've been approving amplified sound for just the regular programming on Main Street for the weekends.
Okay.
It's the closures and the large scale special events that we're bringing to the city council.
Okay.
And again, there too, our, our ideas is, you know, to be, to be mindful of both the downtown and, and the surrounding residents. So you know, doing those Friday nights, not, not during the week there and then ending at appropriate times, probably either nine or 10 o'clock, depending on again attendance.
Okay. Anybody else?
You would ask the police chief or the fire to weigh in on? I believe, wait.
Yeah. If, if either one of them have a comment regarding the, the half block closures. Now would be the time.
Mayor Council, Brad Lopez, Fire Chief, Winter's Fire Department. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Be happy to comment. You know, we've been actively involved with the Downtown Business Association and really supporting their objectives through the pandemic and, and we see the value there. Obviously some, some bumps in the road, just going through things, but from our perspective, you know, we want to support our local businesses and our community members, but we also want to ensure that the general public is, is safe and we can have access for emergency situations. And we've been able to work cooperatively very good with that. So if there's any questions or comments, I could be happy to answer further.
As an example of that, one of the things that we look at when we review the large scale special events is making sure that there's emergency vehicle access down the middle of the road on Main Street and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong. I think you need 20, is it 20 feet access that you're trying to maintain or that's for the roadway? But it's important that a fire truck be able to get down the middle of Main Street in the event of an emergency because fires in those buildings can only be supported from Main Street and not from, from the alleyways. And so when the events come in for activities on Main Street, we will be ensuring that there is emergency vehicle access down the middle of the road.
Kathleen, you're exactly correct. We look at it, you know, from those perspectives of accessibility for medical emergency type issues, but even for example, if there might be a fire in one of the buildings. One of the things that's unique in our downtown, a lot of the infrastructure there does not have fire sprinkler systems in them. There's one that comes to mind, but if we were to have a fire, you know, somewhere downtown, it would be pretty catastrophic. So we want to ensure the, the safety of our folks, our business members and, and members of the public. Should any kind of a, a incident occur during those, those times?
Hey, thank you, Chief. Chief Miller, do you have any comments?
Echo a lot of what Chief Lopez said. Police department's primary concern is the pedestrian vehicle interface. You mentioned about railroad closure and my first year here, when I saw the earthquake festival and they were trying to direct traffic through the middle of it on railroad was scary to say the least. And if you recall my recommendation with closing railroad and I think it really changed the entire nature of that event, made it a much safer event. However, I think we do need a way about you know, impact on traffic, especially weekend day traffic. We have a, a lot of traffic through that area. My only other comment is reference to downtown. The half block closure does create a, you know, what I call a deadhead down there by Ace Hardware. People have been able to navigate it utilizing, you know, sometimes 30 point turns. But it, it's less than ideal, but it, it has worked out so far. And I, I, again, number one concern is pedestrians and protecting, protecting other pedestrians from, you know, from traffic. With that, I'm also here to answer any, any specific questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Council, any further comments? Mayor Protem Biasi?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. Just a couple of comments, you know, I will kind of go back. Fourth Friday started long before the pandemic. When we used to have closures downtown for the fourth Friday events. They were very well received by the community as well as by a lot of people visiting town. People I got a lot of comments from people from out of town saying how much they love coming to winters. And these events that we have, these fourth Friday events were, were a big hit. So I know that did start prior to that pandemic and we kind of made it a bigger closure during the pandemic due to the events, but I think that needs to be remembered. I'm glad that Ms. Loudon brought up the issue on the disabled parking spaces that are taken out of use. I believe there's two of them when we close off the, the half block there. We lose two of the handicapped parking spaces. I do have a couple of ideas on where we might be able to add some new spaces. I know one of the recommendations out of the parking committee's report several years ago was that we need more handicap spaces downtown. I believe that is also something that the consultant from the downtown visioning might be looking at this coming summer and in their study. So, but I have a couple of ideas I might be able to run by public works and the city staff to see if they think it would be feasible. It might be pretty, pretty inexpensive, low hanging fruit we might be able to do in, in the meantime. So that's one thing. And maybe we want to say we can get a report back from the DBA and say the, one of the July meetings and we can just get an update on how the process is going. Should we approve this closure tonight? Just to kind of see how, you know, how's that first three months working out? That kind of thing. So those are my only comments.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lauren?
I'd, I'd be interested in finding out through the process of the closure, if the closure is approved tonight. And I do support the mayor's request for it to be reviewed annually. But I would be interested in finding out what businesses have an increase in traffic and which do not. So that we can have a, a data driven information in the future to make decisions like this.
Thank you. I'd, I'd also support Bill's idea of you know, a midsummer review, just to, to see how it's going, just maybe a, a quick little report from, from Chris if possible, you know, about, you know, how it's going attendance wise and, and if there's been any issues. But I, you know, I, I, I knew, I knew when this whole pandemic started and we went to the outdoor dining and stuff and, and we did all we could to, to make this work to, to save a lot of businesses that may have been lost otherwise. And I, I felt like when we did it, I felt like we were opening the can that was going to be hard to close again if we ever wanted to close it again. It's going to be real hard to get that lid back on. But it's, it's turned into such a phenomenal thing that people from all over the area talk about coming to winters, especially on the weekends. And I think it's done a world of good and it's kept a lot of our businesses afloat for the last two years. And I, I for one, want to see how it, how it does with the more quote, normal year. I think it's going to be wildly successful personally. And I think it's just a matter of, you know, we got to figure out how we're going to manage it. And that's why we're doing this visioning process. That's why we're you know, we've, we've got a lot going on here in regards to this. And you know, of course the, the biggie is always the parking. And you know, how we're going to handle that and, and we've got to stay on top of that for sure. I, I do want to make one other comment about, it was brought up about and maybe it was Dylan. About there is times when I feel like things starting looking a little dingy down there with the garbage and stuff. And I know city staff tries to make sure everything's emptied on Friday and then they're back out there on Monday, sometimes even over the weekend. But I would like to see, you know, if, if the downtown businesses couldn't, couldn't help with that a little bit more this year, especially if we do see the crowds that we're expecting with, you know, just helping out with keeping the tables clean and, and the garbage is emptied. Cause I think that's a, a big part of it. If, if, if we want to be the envy of the area, we can't, can't look all cluttered. You know, we need, we need to keep up on, on keeping it clean and looking nice. So hopefully we can get some help with that because I know there's been times when when staff has been out there on, on Saturdays, emptying the garbage two or three times a day with some of these larger events. So hopefully we can, you know, work out, get some more help on that. But I for one am in support of this, in support of a midsummer review and definitely an annual review moving forward. And if there's no further comments, we entertain a motion for the first part of this. Councilmember New.
You're muted.
Uh, you're muted.
I'm bringing a comment and it's about reaching out to all the members of the Downtown Business Association or all, maybe there are people that aren't members that are downtown that we do ask all of the, the businesses down there. And I know that it's hard to reach out like that. But this is important. And so I urge the Business Association to really do all they can to reach all the businesses. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we want to go ahead and entertain a motion for the Friday to Sunday closure?
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move the council adopt resolution number 2022-18. Reestablishing the Main Street closure schedule based upon the above determinations, which would be from fourth Friday in March through October 31st of 2022. And also that we bring it back for an update in mid-July at one of our meetings in July. And that we reevaluate it again after the end of the poll closure season.
Okay.
I have a discussion on the motion. I want to know how we're reevaluating though. Are, are we going to be able to reevaluate? Who has benefited, who hasn't? Traffic and residential experience around the downtown. And if that is all included in Mayor Protem Biasi's motion, I, I support it.
Mr. Mayor, may I offer a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
So as part of evaluating, one of the things that we'd like to do is make sure we have a complete list of the downtown businesses. And then also we do have a residential list, but one of the things that we might be able to do at the end of the season is to create a survey. But one of the things that we might be able to do at the end of the season is to create a survey that surveys the business owners, the property owners and the residents. And specifically for the business owners, ask a question if they feel that the the season activities helped or was beneficial to their business. And then at least that allows them to provide some input. And so we can do that as part of a sort of a year end wrap up on the on the season.
Yes, I would agree. I would agree to having that type of evaluation based on. I think we have a survey tool within our, one of our software programs that we can put out a survey of not only our downtown businesses, but also to the residents in that area that are affected and get some feedback from them. And then we would have the data driven information that Councilmember Lauren is requesting.
I will second that motion.
Okay. If there's no further comment, then Elena, Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would. I would have some concerns about the the impact this would have on Youth Day. Is Youth Day going to be around anymore? I just wonder.
Yes, it's in the planning stages. I know that because Kathy's on the committee. And yeah, they've they've already mentioned that they would not do anything that would conflict with Youth Day. And the street would be open for a Youth Day parade.
That's part of our vote tonight.
Yes.
Correct. Okay, if there's no further comments, Elena, we can do a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Dylan had his hand raised again.
Okay, one last time. Dylan, go ahead quickly.
There's supposed to be an evaluation of the businesses and to reach out to those that even are a member of the WDBA and to get feedback. I don't know if I have much faith in that considering that we haven't been contacted once in any regard to any street closures besides for just getting approval. Not whether it impacts positively to not just me, but any of the businesses that are in that immediate area. Closed. So it's not just me. I know Serendipity is not contacted. I know that the pharmacy is not being contacted. Gene Delinari Realty is not being contacted. So these are businesses that are in that immediate area that aren't being contacted and asked of art. Whether it's benefiting, not benefiting traffic wise, if it's, if it's being something that we benefit from and and who is it benefiting?
So Mr. Mayor, the staff would take it apart. We would do that outreach as part of the evaluation. Currently, the city staff has not done any direct outreach to any of the businesses regarding downtown programming. So as part of the year end closure and the evaluation, we would do that outreach.
Thank you.
Something at the end of the year, considering we're two years into this.
Okay, thank you. Elena, can we go ahead and do our vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Lauren.
Hi.
Councilmember New.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Biasi.
Hi.
Mayor Cowan.
Hi. Much encouraging and honestly, thank you, everybody for your work on this and your comments tonight. Okay, now on to this, basically the second half of this, which I think is being a little more specific about the event for the spring kickoff. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, they've already, we've already received some comments regarding this actual event. I don't know if there are any additional comments that council members would like to make regarding the proposed spring festival.
Anybody? Any council comments?
I would just like to say, I'm I'm a little bit curious about the the closure on Friday, March 25th. That we're planning on going from Railroad to First Street. And I know when it comes back for an actual vote, I would make sure that we do get feedback from all the businesses through there, especially the ones that we affected. By closing that street off, you know, a little bit more to the west, like Ace Hardware, I know they get a lot of people that go in there. So we'd be closing it. It sounds like there wouldn't be access down to Ace. I guess I would, we would still be looking at closing it at 3:30 or so as normal time. And then the DBA would need to have some type of barricades put in place since we don't have bollards at that intersection that I can remember having in place there. So and there would also be like the effect on the the First Northern Bank since they'll have a hard time getting customers into the parking lot there and the store next door. So some of those things, but I do think also for that street fair, which was mentioned earlier. The the closure of the Railroad and Main intersection there creates a lot of issues with pedestrian crossings and traffic. And we might want to think about the closing it just from from Railroad down to Second Street instead. Those were my only comments on that particular event.
Councilmember Lauren.
I'd like to echo many of the comments by Mayor Protem Biasi. I think that they're spot on. And I think that what we, I think summarizing a little bit of what we heard tonight is that I I think we feel like the the DBA needs to really do a good due diligence on all the businesses and being able to bring back their, the supporter just comments from the, from all the businesses that are downtown, that are affected, that are included, whether or not they're members of the DBA or not. And I think that as as we are a growing city that has increased in population from the, from, you know, what we were maybe five years ago, when we were doing the occasional Fourth Fridays. We have maybe more at stake in closing Railroad and Main. And I think we have to be able to have fresh eyes on on safety and really rely on our experts like the the police chief on safety on that before we consider those closures in the future. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Councilmember New.
I just, yeah, I just have a comment and it's about the date of the opening. And the fact that it has been published and I would not vote against it because of this. But I think it's really important that those kinds of things don't happen, that we don't have, have it advertised that it's going to happen before we even approve it. And I I just want to make that as a comment and make sure that the Downtown Business Association falls up with that and is careful in the future. Thank you.
Yes, I I agree. I do want to just comment a little bit about the normal process because I'm pretty familiar with it with helping with so many events. And and my wife being the one carrying the paper to every business downtown repeatedly when we do street closures. And somebody with the event typically carries a paper and knocks on every door for the length of the parade route or whatever it is. And tells them what's going to happen, the date it's going to happen. And they would have to log on that paper, what their comment is, if they're for it, against it, whatever the case may be. Or if there was nobody there to to answer, then that's that's noted. I've watched her do that multiple times and seen her do that paper. And I know once that's done, then typically along with that, there is staff that meets with the organizers of the event. And for however much of the town they're blocking off or closing, there there's, there's a process, you know, of going over everything with the police chief, the fire chief. And what we're going to do for everything from restrooms to barricades to all of that. So there is a process for every one of these events. And and I know the DBA is very well aware of that. Chris and Corinne and everybody's been very involved with, you know, the Tractor Parade the last few years. That's grown immensely and become quite a deal. Carnitas Festival, Youth Day, Earthquake Festival, when we were having that every year. So yeah, I think it's just, you know, I think we just got thrown a little bit off guard with this one because everybody saw on on social media before we even knew it was something that was going to happen or be proposed to happen. So I would echo the sentiment that, you know, we want to make sure that we're not the last to know. We always tell the city manager that, don't let us be the last to know. So I think that's, you know, part of the emphasis here is to make sure that we go through the process in the right order. I don't think anybody's necessarily against these kind of events because they bring a lot of business to town for for a lot of businesses. And 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 it's why people like winters. So we just need to get through, get through the process the best way we can. Elena, do we have anybody else that wants to comment on this part of the discussion?
Yes, Mayor, it looks like Tina Loudon has her hand raised.
Okay, Tina, welcome back.
Thank you. I echo everything that you have said, Mayor Cowan. I was amazed. It just felt like this was really fast track. And I I would just, and I'm pretty active here in winters, but I was really amazed about this. Closing the, closing the street to First Street, there there are some people, that's where, that's what they do, the shopping at Ace Hardware. Or that's where they go to the pharmacy or or get their hair done at Serendipity or whatever. Or go to the bank, to the, to the ATM machine. And then, of course, that parking lot near, between the bank and whatever that store is, I'm I'm assuming that's going to be closed. So I, again, I would just amazed that this was so fast track. And like everybody else, I found out about this on Facebook. I don't know who's in charge, but just to let you know. And again, think of the seniors taking away some more spots from us. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Elena, anybody else with a hand up?
Yes, Corinne Martinez raised her hand.
Okay, welcome back, Corinne.
Thank you, Mayor Cowan, and thanks for the opportunity. Certainly appreciate all the comments. So as the member of the DBA working on programming, I'll acknowledge our tardiness in this one. You know, time got away from us and we felt like we needed to get the word out and we are a bit ahead of the game. We acknowledge that. Having said that, some of the other comments, I just, we're talking about doing events like this twice a year, anchored in the spring and in the fall. We're talking about doing events that bring significant number of people to town. Events like we used to have, like Fourth Friday, with people roaming the street, getting their food from the local restaurants, enjoying the businesses and really loving downtown winters. You know, we don't have those activities now. We were the envy of the county when we kicked off Fourth Friday. You know, it went away, not just because of the pandemic and other towns in the county took it away. You know, as the DBA, we're, we feel, you know, it's incumbent upon us to bring back that magic of downtown winters. And we understand that we're, that we're inconveniencing people in our own community. But frankly, we want those people down there supporting what we're doing and being part of the community and sharing, you know, what we have, which is special with everybody that wants to come to town. You know, we're not doing it every day and we're not doing it every Fourth Friday. We're doing it in these anchor events. And, you know, so for this one, you know, you know, we didn't, we didn't get our, we didn't get, we're out, you know, over our skis on this one. Expect us to come back for an ask in in October. This one doesn't get approved. But we need as a community to get back delivering some compelling experiences so that people want to come to this town. And they want to experience the magic of winters. That's what we're trying to do here. And that's what we would ask your support doing.
Okay, great. Thank you, Corinne. Elena.
Yes, Chris Turkovich has his hand raised.
Okay, welcome back, Chris.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm just kind of echoing Corinne, just take responsibility for kind of the clumsy rollout of this. This one, we had a lot of internal discussions about this whole street closure and events. And yeah, just got a little late in the game to to get it out and I apologize for that. And and whether it's this event or October, we are making progress on our organization. We're incorporating an event coordinator who's happens to be on on the call here today, which will help us get more organized, be more streamlined with our our processes. And so we're excited about not just this this event, but future events and bringing more activity to downtown and doing it in a way where we can be more transparent with the city and the in the community, as well as make sure that we're we're doing all the appropriate things in terms of public safety and the processes. So again, it's all on us, myself and and our board for for kind of this clumsy rollout and having it come on social media before approvals. And that that won't happen again.
Thank you for that. And I I'm I'm certain we'll see this back at our next meeting on, I believe, the 15th.
Yes.
For for approval for for the event. And I'm sure at that time we'll get, you know, a recommendation from staff as far as how they feel about, you know, whether it goes to Elliot to second or or what. Because we, we depend on that a lot for for our decision making there. So I'm sure here in very short order, you'll be all meeting with with the the chiefs and and staff to work all that out. And and I trust that can all be worked out amongst staff and and the event organizers. So we look forward to seeing it back on the 15th for consideration. Elena, did we have anybody else that wanted to comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor, Dylan has his hand raised.
Okay, Dylan, welcome back.
Me again. The main thing I just wanted to kind of clear up too is I'm not like hundred percent against, you know, the street closures in general. I'm hundred percent for the event, you know, that do happen because I mean, I do have to, and I've already expressed this to Delaney herself too. In regards to the previous, the holiday bizarre was a very successful event. I think that it seems that something that can be offered to people, experience the magic of the winters, to see what downtown is about. It's a beautiful place when it's clean, but it's it's something I'm I'm not against. Closure. I'm just kind of not too keen on the duration of the closures. So if it's going to be something that's like a Friday thing, a Saturday thing, and it's going to be like a one day use to close with a three days. That's the, that's the one part that I kind of don't agree with is the three day closure for a one day event. I do understand that this one, here's going to be a three day event coming up in March, which is, I mean, I'm fine with that. The other thing I would need to do would be some of these events, the duration, maybe a little bit longer. I think I already expressed that to Delaney. I know she's here listening. When it's something that's so short, gives the, you know, the surrounding communities or gives their community and also the businesses, it's a short duration of time to respond to that huge influx of people that are coming to town. And it can easily overwhelm businesses. I know us, we were extremely overwhelmed with that one, which I mean, it's not a bad thing. Just it's kind of hard when you have thirty people in your shop at a time and you're trying to deal with everyone trying to get in and get out because they see a huge amount of crowd. And they want to get to, you know, the best deal or the quickest. So it's kind of hard when it's such a a short amount of time. That's definitely something I know I mentioned before, but I just wanted to clear that I'm not hundred percent against all those street closures. Just maybe not so often or for for like a day that's not like a Sunday when it's 116 degrees and we know no one's going to be outside. And other other concern with the drought, with the misters running pretty much all day, that's another concern too. So that's.
All right, thank you. Elena, was there anybody else?
Chris Turkovich has his hand raised.
Sorry, I didn't take it down. I'm good.
Okay. All right. Well, I think we didn't need to vote on this. This was just to discuss a little bit prior to the DBA and the event organizers finishing up their applications and process in this event. So if there's no further comments on this item, we will go ahead and move on to Item B, which is Urgency Noted Ordinance Number 2022-02, Extending the Prohibition on the Issuance of Grading Permits Without Plan Approval or Security Pending Preparation of a More Comprehensive Grading Ordinance. And I think this is a repeat. We've done this prior. And I think this is um a repeat. We've done this um prior. Um and it's just given staff more time to get that grading ordinance written, I believe. Uh city manager?
Yes, that's correct. And very briefly, um this is a request for a six month extension, although we don't need the um a six month extension. The council initially uh adopted the first ur- urgency ordinance back on uh August third. Um and it was extended, um well, it's extended within the time slot. I think it was September within the forty-five days. And so as council is aware and the community is aware, we have a new engineering firm, a lead engineering firm that is under contract, Somas. And so we would like to be able to give them some time to be able to review um the draft ordinance. It has been prepared, the grading ordinance. We'd like them to um take a look at that once they get themselves up to speed on the projects um that they're taking over. And then um work with the developers, give them an opportunity to be able to provide some input, and then we expect to bring that back to the city council.
Okay, thank you. Any staff or staff? Um council comments on the item? Any public comments on the item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um since this is a public hearing, I was wondering if you could please open up the.
Oh, okay. We'll do that. We'll open the public hearing at eight P M. Elena, do we have any commenters for the public hearing regarding the grading ordinance?
I do not see any at this time.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing at eight oh one P M. All right, moving on. If there's no further comments, we'll entertain a motion.
I will uh move the item uh ordn- urgency ordinance number twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two dash oh two, extending the prohibition of the issuance of any grading permits without plan approval or security depending preparation of a more comprehensive grading ordinance.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Lauren and a second by Councilmember New. Elena, we can do a roll call vote, please.
Absolutely. Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Councilmember Lauren.
Hi.
Councilmember New.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Biase.
Hi.
And Mayor Cowan.
Hi, motion encouraged unanimously. Thank you. All right, with that, we're going to move on to the city manager's report. Kathleen?
Yes, thank you very much. Just briefly, I don't have any updates, but I did want to um alert people to the strategic initiatives and staff projects update that I included as an information item at the end of the agenda. Um these were projects that were approved by the city council as initiatives during our goal setting last summer. Uh they were reconfirmed in September when we brought a report back to um the city council. And then um we've discussed this several times. And so I wanted to be able to provide an update so people understood where we were. This is how we track this. These are general updates, um not necessarily very detailed or specific, but I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I would just maybe like a little bit of clarification. Some of the projects on there, um some of the comments on the status of the projects have to do with some of the rules on the use of the A R P funding. And we might be able to use that a little more than we originally planned. Could you expand on that part of it?
Yes, thank you very much for asking. So originally, when um the A R P, the American Rescue Plan Act was um approved and signed into law, um it was very specific about what the money could be used for, one of which was um revenue recovery, lost revenue. And the city did not qualify under the lost revenue uh because um we had enough building activity that filled some of the losses that we had in other areas like gas and fuel. And we didn't have any T O T in the base year, sales tax going down. All of that was balanced out by um building fees, which are included in the base calculation. So there were enough, um there was enough feedback that the Treasury Department, which actually um writes the rules for bills that are passed by Congress and signed into law. They um expanded the um lost revenue. So basically, um we can now claim the claw, the lost revenue and our full allocation of one point eight million dollars will be covered by the lost revenue rules that have been expanded, which gives us much greater flexibility in terms of being able to use A R P dollars to fund any of our strategic initiatives or priorities. So what we did last October, I believe it was, we would went back to council with some initial projects for um the use of A R P money. And that was when the use of A R P was going to be much more narrowly focused for us. Um now we have sort of carte blanche. We can use the one point eight million dollars um to fund any number of different things that we'd like to do. So our process would still be very similar, which would be to bring these projects back one by one um based on assessing need, based on our priorities and have council um approve them for A R P funding prior to allocating that money.
Great. I look forward to hearing that come back to us for some evaluation in future.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, for sure. Anybody else? Councilmember New?
Um I looked at the list of uh strategic initiatives and project list. And when I did that, it brought back to my mind that we have uh let seismic retrofitting slip from our uh view or our memory. And after the Napa earthquake, it was a big thing. And we haven't done anything about it. And I know that we're lacking in money and we're lacking in staff. But I am curious to know if there are any other staff uh council members that would be interested in at least talking about this at a city council meeting to see if there's anything we can do. I have been reading, anything I can find, any grants, those kinds of things. I've talked to the city manager about it. And uh there are a lot of problems because many of our buildings that need retrofitting are privately owned. Um so I I'm aware that there are problems. But I'm also aware that we need to do something and um we're not. And so I am asking publicly to see if there's anybody else that would um well, two other people that would be interested in bringing this up at a council meeting.
I would.
I would also.
All right, then I would like to ask the city manager to find a spot for us in the near future and on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, um I'm going to bring up something I bring up quite often. Kathleen, tell me we're going to get to start doing in-person meetings pretty soon.
I can hear Elena laughing through the wall. So yes, I'd be happy to provide an update. Um so right now, A V three sixty-one um allows for remote meetings or um the council can decide if it would like to come back in person. What we've been striving for is a hybrid platform that allows us to provide people, council members, the public or staff, the opportunity to participate remotely or participate in person. Part of our difficulty has been that um our uh platform down in the council chambers has not been stable in the remote side. Um so we either lose the video or we lose the audio. And under A V three sixty-one, if the technology um hiccups or burps in the middle of a meeting, we have to stop the meeting if there are people who are participating remotely um somehow lose connection where they don't have video or audio, which means that the meeting stops. So our our platform has not been stable. So we've been working to address this. We've expanded the bandwidth um in terms of what goes into the council chamber. Um we've been working with Granicus. We have now brought in A V consultants. And we have one today um who um indicated that it might cost approximately fifty thousand dollars for us to upgrade our A V equipment, sorry, upgrade the A V equipment and streamline all of the connections because we have a lot of spaghetti in the chamber. Um that is actually part of our problem because all, everything is, all the connections, every time there's a connection, there's the potential for apparently some interruption or loss of um some of the signal that's going through the wire. And so he's going to write something up. Um we have another um contractor who's going to come in. Um as a point of reference, Scotts Valley's council tonight is apparently considering an A V upgrade of a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in order to be able to provide a hybrid platform. So um we knew that peeling this back would be a little bit expensive once we got the contractors involved. But we have not been able to stabilize it with our community volunteers. We do have somebody else who's coming in this week to see if we can um duct tape it and bubble gum it together um at a much um lower cost. But um the concern is, is that if it's not stable and we're running a hybrid meeting, if we have any interruption or technology, we have to stop the meeting. So um the other um interesting huh um piece that we learned today is that um with um all of the supply chain interruptions and the equipment shortages, that potentially some of the equipment that we need to swap out, some of the older equipment, might have a lead time of up to six months. So um that was today's news flash. So what um we're hoping is that once he gets the quote, um it would need to come back to the city council, um either this contractor or another one that we, whatever it is we do, would need to come back to the city council. It is eligible for A R P money. Um and um in the meantime, if we are at a decision point for in-person or remote and we can't make the hybrid happen, we would bring that conversation back to the city council for a discussion and for a vote. Um and if we're not able to make the hybrid stable and we're obligated to come back in person um with any potential changes um coming out of the state associated with the Brown Act, um then um people who are not able to participate in person um would no longer be able to participate. So addressing the A V issues in the chamber has been more complicated than I think all of us had hoped. And we were certainly surprised by the price and even more surprised by the lead time on some of the equipment. So we'll see what the next contractor says.
Sounds like a perfect use for A R P money and the sooner the better.
Right.
So, okay.
Uh I have some comments. There's a.
Yeah.
Uh go ahead.
Yeah, first I I I just wanted to say is to the um the getting back to um council in person that um uh because of um working so closely with Sac Valley Region League of California Cities, I've had some meetings with uh many other cities about what they're doing in in their city. And and absolutely uh what city manager Kathleen Trump has said is correct. We have to have um, you know, everything up and running and everybody has to be included if that's the direction we're going. But I just wanted to say that many daisies are in different sizes. And we happen to have a really small dais. So where uh other people have uh six feet uh that an easy separation in between where people sit, we're actually shoulder to shoulder. Um we're right up against each other. And so we might have a different timeframe in our dais than other people with a more room because there that, you know, one size doesn't fit all for all communities in their uh dais. Uh so I just want to make that uh point. And then the other one is that Pierre, while you were uh making your point about earthquake retrofitting, I knew I read it somewhere. Um so I wanted to just point out that it's on the first page and it's the third item. And it says undertake downtown visioning and initiate plan implementation. Hire a consultant to bring forward previous plans, engage the community and businesses and develop updated policies and ordinance related to outdoor dining, Main Street, outdoor gathering, parking, trash and earthquake retrofitting. So it is there, but maybe it did get kind of left off with the the consult. So the um it 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 is there and it's the number one priority.
And if, well, if I could, if I could explain a little bit. So the earthquake retrofitting is a completely separate topic that did not fit within the seventy-five thousand dollar scope. So the consulting group that is um going to be the recommended consultant for the downtown visioning, that seventy-five thousand dollars will cover only so much. And so that's what we're refining right now. We can ask that same consulting group who has a division associated with um this type of topic to prepare a separate scope as an add-on that could then be um included in for council consideration. Um conveniently, they have that service available, but that seventy-five thousand dollars is not enough to cover a a wide scope of what people are looking for. But we can get that, um we can get a proposal on that topic. It would be in addition to the seventy-five thousand.
Awesome. And just to finish my comment, um when um uh Mayor uh Biase spoke earlier about the Laughco presentation Ted Talk um with all the um experts, including Assemblymember Cecilia Aguirre Curry on broadband. Um it it did remind me that we did value broadband and it is a number three priority. But we also did say that if there were, uh there was a funding opportunity that helped something rise um uh in um accessibility, that we might um uh choose to look at it. And I just wanted to call attention to um the very important and um uh item broadband and the fact that there's uh state and federal funding made available um that uh Cecilia uh was talking about. So um it it is a priority of ours, but it seems to be a a really strong priority for our region.
So we are already in contact and working collaboratively with R C R C and Yolo County, who is a member of that um regional effort for broadband. So we've already facilitated that and we've already initiated that connection. Um and so we'll be working on lockstep as part of a regional effort.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other comments, we'll go ahead and close the meeting at eight fifteen. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.